Good evening and welcome. We're going to call to order the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, December 14th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
This is Mansfield.
This is McKidrick.
Here.
Bravo.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Hi.
Ms. Autry.
Here.
Thank you. And joining us, or leading us, I should say, in the pledge of allegiance this evening is one of our student representatives to the board from Bookdell CLC, DeEssence Jackson. And Ms. Jackson, I saw, yep, there you are. I see you on the call whenever you're ready. If everyone else could please mute their microphones and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And as our board will recall, our bylaws state that we will elect a president pro tem to handle the opening portions of our meeting at the beginning of each year, the organizational portion of our meeting where we elect officers. And so we elected Bruce Alexander, most recently for this year to serve as our president pro tem. And for next year in January, when we return on January 11th, we are in need of electing a president pro tem, which we added to the agenda for this evening. And so at this time, I would like to open it up for nominations for president pro tem. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Lisa Mansfield.
Hey, Patrick, can you, I'm sorry, Mr. President, can you, can you just explain for those who are watching what the role of the president pro tem is going to be? It has been.
Yes. The president pro tem presides over the organizational portion of the meeting at the beginning of the year where we elect president and vice president.
I'll second the president pro tem nomination for Ms. Mansfield.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for Ms. Mansfield. Are there, are there, I should say, we have a nomination. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing and seeing no other nominations, we'll take a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Nominations are closed. At this time, we have a sole nomination for Ms. Lisa Mansfield as president pro tem. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Ryan, am I, am I supposed to vote yes or just abstain?
Yes.
You may.
Yes. Always feels weird. I don't know.
I'll, I'll take.
It would be weird if you abstained or voted no, so.
Mrs. McKidrick.
Yes, that would be weird if I voted no for myself.
Mrs. McKidrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will open it up for community and school reflections. Would anyone like to go first? And we do have quite a few people on this meeting, so if I don't see you, please leave it in the chat. We'll start with Mrs. McKidrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to read a brief piece of correspondence that I got, and that's all I, I have. Ms. McKidrick, a member of the Board of Education, as an educational practitioner of 28 years, I'm so very proud of your CFO, Ryan Pendleton. His leadership of the Fair School Funding Formula has been extraordinary. I have found his vision, his research, and his humanitarian spirit to be refreshing and authentic. Mr. Pendleton is a terrific representative of APS, and I'm sure you agree. Congratulations, Dr. Michael Tuff, Superintendent of Worcester City Schools.
Wow, thank you, Mrs. McKidrick. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Pendleton. Mrs. Mansfield.
First of all, I want to thank Bruce for, for that nomination. I look forward to helping us through the beginning of the January meeting. Couple really, I've got to do virtually in the last few weeks. First, congratulations to some STEM High School students for their recent win in a congressional app challenge. This has been a recurring theme at the STEM High School for the last couple of years, and Congressman Ryan was on hand to give out this award to three young gentlemen from the STEM High School. Lucas, Cameron, and Jared were their first names. Great learners, and congratulations to them for their app. It was a fix to part of a Google app piece. Don't totally understand what they did, nor did I speak the language they were speaking about code. I was really impressed with them, though, and so was Congressman Ryan. Big congratulations to Coach Popa and her team, and Coach Appleby, who does handle that section for the STEM High School. So, and Deb Folk did a great job of representing us in that, I mean, that online ceremony, really great job. Keep up the good work on that. Akron getting things done. And then really fun experience over the weekend. Firestone Theater did an online play, and it had full special effects, and there were three opportunities to see it over the weekend, and I got to see the Sunday afternoon presentation. It was an online play that involved Dungeons and Dragons and interesting costumes and explosions, really amazing things that they could do virtually. So congratulations to them for, for all the hard work that went into that, to Tess Burgler and Mark Zimmerman for their guidance through college and career academies and through the theater program at Firestone. And last, I don't know if you guys got a chance to open the email with, with Stephanie Davis from today with the Elf on the Shelf. If you have not, please take a look at those. It will make your whole day. I laugh so hard. So I would love to see more of our principals do that if they would like, because that.
Okay, we're going to give Ms. Mansfield a second. Make sure she hasn't dropped off. We could just hold up.
I think I'm still here. Am I still here?
You're still here. You're back. We heard you say you were every principal.
To any other principal that wants to do an Elf on the Shelf photo shoot, I would welcome and will share and will, will enjoy.
Mrs. Mansfield. Mr. Alexander.
Yes, I briefly want to say that last week, Mrs. McKidrick and I attended the first student representative meeting, and it was a good meeting for the students. They, it was a fun activity that they, they did. I need to get with them to learn a whole lot about this technology, because they did an activity where they took post-its and put on a whiteboard from, and I was lost. I didn't know what I was doing, but I will get their help. But it was very good meeting. And then, once we were done with the activity, they had Dan Rambler come in and talk about student services. So it was, it was fun and joyful, and I really enjoyed it being at that meeting. Mrs. McKidrick and I, we both were a little challenged, but I think I was a little more challenged technically than technologies than she was. So it was, but it was fun activity and a good meeting. And Ms., uh, Ms. Dreamer did a very good job. Whitfield did a very good job in, in organizing and getting these students together as all, as usual. So I wanted to say I enjoyed that. Thank you, DeEssence and the rest of you for that activity. It was fun. And I know you guys would do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Dr. Hall.
Thanks. I appreciate it, Mr. President. Just checking, I'm having some internet issues. Can you all hear and see and hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly.
Thank you. No, I just had one item called, a brief shout out for, and a thank you to Ms., Mrs. Stephanie Andrews. She is the integrated language arts teacher over at the Academy of Innovation and Industry for Kimmergarth Field High School. And she also is the National Honor Society Advisor for Kimmergarth Field High School. And their members have kicked off their, their first service project. It's a sock drive that, that runs through Friday, December 18th at 4:00 PM. And so that's watching, you know, just, you all should know that socks are the number one needed item for folks who are homeless of any age or gender. So again, any size of sock, color, style, we'd ask that you consider, you know, dropping those off over at the Kimmergarth Field High School. They're being collecting the mail. There's a, there's actually a web link that I cannot, can't show, because I'm not savvy enough to show my, to share my screen here with you all, but there's actually, you can actually donate through Amazon as well. So if you call the school, they can walk you through that. Also want to point out that any socks they donate are going to be donated to Akron Snow Angels, which I think many of us on, are very well aware of Akron Snow Angels and how integral they are to serving homeless people in our community. So again, I wanted to thank Mrs. Stephanie Andrews, as well as her students over at Kimmergarth Field, and ask anybody who's watching or any of you that are on the call today, consider making a donation. So, and hopefully I haven't, hopefully I haven't violated any board policy by saying that. If I, if I did, then I'll take my, my swats later after class. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Appreciate it. Thanks for bringing that up. Ms. Autry.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to briefly and quickly say thank you to everybody for their condolences and the beautiful flower arrangement during the time of my family's loss and the loss of my father. I just wanted to thank everybody for your prayers and condolences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Anyone else? Ms. Jackson, did you have anything you wanted to share this evening? I hate to put you on the spot. I just want to make sure you saw my comment.
Um, yes, I did have something to share.
Good. Please go ahead. Floor's yours.
Hi, my name is DeEssence Jackson. I'm a 10th grader at Bookdell CLC. I am in a sports medicine pathway, and I plan to attend Howard University. I want to study to become an OBGYN. During this pandemic, there has been a lot of ups and downs. The downs are not being able to go to school, or at least, you know, not having an option. I did not get to have a softball season because it was canceled, and my mom would not let me play volleyball because of the outbreaks the newspapers reported. For me, the ups are good teachers like Ms. Davidson and Ms. Turk. Ms. Davidson is very understanding, and she is all about helping her students and not adding more pressure during this time. She always keeps her students notified, so we won't be shocked about anything. She makes math easier to learn by engaging with her students. She makes sure if we are struggling, we can always come to her. Ms. Turk is my language arts teacher. She has been my teacher for two years now. She makes me want to come to class because students are able to get the job done, but we can still laugh with her. Ms. Turk is very invested in her students. She always comes to class with a happy spirit, even if something has bothered her during the day. If students in Akron Public Schools were to have more teachers like Ms. Davidson and Ms. Turk, I feel as if more students would want to come to class, and they would actually enjoy it. Students' test scores and grades and attendance would go up. Students would have more opportunities like college. Students compare college and high school a lot, so they think since school is difficult, college will be difficult. If students have more understanding, outgoing, and fun teachers, more students will actually want to attend college. Speaking of fun, I received an email about the Bookdell Harvest Festival. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard a lot of great things about it that I wanted to share. There were 87 participants in the Harvest Live Ritual event. 142 parents entered the secret code and viewed the videos. 502 dinners were reserved for the Harvest Dinner jive through. There were 367 dinners that were picked up at the jive through. 63 dinners were delivered to homes, and food baskets were delivered to the homes of families who indicated they needed food on the exit ticket. The baskets were delivered by the family liaisons, Ricky Powers and Maya Christian. 82 remaining dinners were divided among volunteers. The Harvest Festival YouTube video was viewed by 196 people as of November 25th. Academy coach Deanna Edwards coordinated the event. I would also like to thank Mrs. McKidrick for meeting with me. We had a great talk over lunch. The student board members look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday at the virtual holiday celebration. I won't be able to attend, but I wish you all a great time. On behalf of the student board members, we wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you so much. What a treasure to hear from you. Appreciate the updates from Bookdell CLC. Would anyone else like to jump in?
I actually just had a question for Ms. Jackson.
Yes, please.
Mentioned that she had lunch with Ms. McKidrick. I just wanted to ask, can you describe what she looks like?
Not fair, not fair.
So just teasing, just teasing Ms. McKidrick, just teasing.
Uh, we do miss your face, Ms. McKidrick. I hope to see you again in person.
Couldn't happen.
Anyone else? Yeah, great update. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, thank you all for sharing your community and school reflections. We have no request to address the board tonight and no recognitions, but we do have a very exciting presentation this evening, and we're so very happy to, or I'm very happy to turn the floor over as we talk about Portage Path and the International Baccalaureate Program. So at this time, I will turn it over to, I believe, Dr. Ellen McWilliams Woods and our team at Portage Path.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are very excited to be here tonight, and I am going to give the honors to Mrs. Mansfield and Mrs. McKidrick to introduce our special guest tonight.
Thank you, Dr. McWilliams Woods. So our instructional policy committee is pleased to bring a special presentation to you tonight. We were recently made aware of a very important time-sensitive letter that our district received, and the letter requires action on the part of the board to authorize Portage Path Community Learning Center as an international baccalaureate primary years program school. And so now, we have invited Principal Summers to share some information with us. So Principal Summers, take it away.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm happy to share a story of transformation, connection, and success. Over the past three years, Portage Path has embraced the work of becoming, let me take a breath, an international baccalaureate primary years program world school. This work has brought about many positive changes to our learning community. Last month, we completed a virtual verification visit from IB and waited patiently for our results. I wrote a poem about the evening I received those results, and I would like to share it with you. The title of the poem is "Merry Christmas from the International Baccalaureate." 'Twas a night just like all nights with viracy doom. No students, just face masks and hearts filled with gloom. Checking so many emails, 2003, wishing that at least one of them was from IB. While students are working on Chromebooks from home, Go Guardian follows wherever they roam. So I freshened my coffee, leaned back in my seat, and joined my 505th Google Meet. When suddenly Jill called in a whispered exhale, she squeaked, "Oh, my gosh, hurry, check your email." I opened my email with super fast speed to find information I'd waited to read. I squinted my eyes at the screen all aglow, scanning for the answers IB would bestow. When what to my wondering eyes should appear, the best news I've gotten this whole COVID year. The letter revealed that IB was impressed. With zilch nada, no matters to be addressed. IB gave us eight commendations to claim. Our teachers belong in IB Hall of Fame. The letter included such grand salutations. Merry Christmas to all, and congratulations. I'm thrilled to announce that Portage Path has met requirements to be an authorized IB PYP school. And at this time, I would like a few members of the Portage Path team to share some details of our journey.
Good evening. I am Elizabeth Toppin. This past summer, I humbly joined Portage Path CLC as the dean of students. The journey of Portage Path CLC as an IB world school will carry on the mission to empower students to become inquiring, compassionate, lifelong learners who demonstrate respect for all and take action to create a more peaceful world. I witnessed and became a part of this mission from my first day. Our learning community, educators, students, and their families share and live the same message and vision. There was and is no room for confusion.
Good evening. My name is Jill Holcomb, and I'm the IB coordinator at Portage Cap. I'm excited to celebrate our Portage Path community and give you a glimpse of our three-year journey. So we were actually ready for our IB visit, our authorization visit back in May. However, the pandemic altered our plans, and when we found out virtual visits were the only type of visits taking place this year, we really wondered how we could possibly share everything that has taken place within our community, the complete transformation the past few years. Well, we soon found out we had nothing to worry about. And here's some evidence of our transformation. The community transformation? Well, in the spring of 2017, we had a total of 13 families take part in our evening reading night. Our last in-person family event had over 300 participants, and even our last drive-through this fall, we had almost 200 participants. Our school culture transformation. Our school culture and climate change through our development, our development and our understanding of the IB learner profile attributes and our classroom meetings. And the more you get to know your classmates, the more likely you are to treat each other with respect and a more caring attitude. Learning transformation? Well, students are actually partners in the learning process. They're inquiring, they're creating their own meaning, they're learning to research, and they're taking action with what they've learned. The teaching transformation? Well, teachers designed transdisciplinary lessons, and they were developed to dive deeper into the curriculum. So did you know that on top of all of that information I just gave you, the IB evaluation team actually meets privately with parents and students? And they mentioned to us that one of our parents made a very powerful statement about our school community. She said, "At Portage Path, no child is invisible." They also mentioned we have a collaborative staff with a great deal of passion for what they do. So IB provides feedback in the forms of matters to be addressed and commendations, and we had no matters to be addressed out of the required standards and practices, resulting in no delay in our authorization. IB commendations, which recognize outstanding demonstrations of those same standards and practices? Well, we're going to hear about, our staff members are now going to share with you our eight commendations we've received from this international evaluation team.
The IB commends. Virtual classroom observations demonstrated that teachers are able to confidently implement the program using a range of digital tools.
The tools that we've been using are Google Classroom, Elmo, ClassDojo, and Go Guardian.
These digital tools support the learning and teaching at Portage Path.
The IB commends. Virtual observations demonstrate that teachers value student thinking.
Teachers acknowledge and thank students for their input.
IB commends. Teachers discuss the support and guidance that the PYP coordinator and members of the pedagogical leadership team.
Support and guidance are extended through the collaborative planning process.
The IB commends. The school has ensured that teachers systematically address the development of the IB learner profile attributes in collaborative planning and reflection.
The school has built a stimulating learning environment based on understanding and respect throughout the school community.
The IB commends that the learner profile is a natural part of the school discourse.
Virtual observations demonstrated that teachers are comfortable in demonstrating and referencing the attributes in their lessons.
The IB commends the awareness of the development of the IB learner profile attributes.
The awareness extends across the school community, which includes students, teachers, parents, and pedagogical leaders.
The IB commends. Personal education activities are evidently taking place throughout the school.
Social education activities are evidently taking place throughout the school.
What I like about Portage Path is that no child is invisible.
Thank you for the opportunity to share our success this evening. In closing, I would like to add that Portage Path commends the commitment and infallible support over the last 25 years from Dr. David James and the Akron Public School Board, the one that sits before us today and ones that have come before, that have made it possible for Portage Path CLC to reach IB authorization status.
So, Mr. President, I want to add a few things to this. We are the only urban district in Ohio and in surrounding states that have an IB continuum for students in grades K through 12. From an idea developed by a small group of teachers in 2012 to this announcement with a sixth IB school to become authorized, this Board of Education commends the superintendent, Dr. McWilliams Woods, Mrs. Oatley Kelly, Mrs. Karen Gijic, and the entire faculty and community of Portage Path International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Community Learning Center. That is a mouthful. Thank you all, and we are so very proud of your achievement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. And I, yeah, congratulations to all of you. You know you're doing what you love when you're, my face hurts right now from smiling and laughing. Wonderful presentation, and Mrs. Mansfield pointed out, and rightfully so, that this was a teacher-led effort. I mean, this really came from the staff, the building-level staff on up, and was supported by the folks who are going to be implementing it, and, and started by the folks that were going to be implementing it, and years in the making. So congratulations to all of you. I mean, well done, well deserved. We're so excited for you and appreciate the hard work that you've poured in, not only to this effort, but into our students every day. So thank you so much and congratulations. Would anyone else like to add anything? Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. Wonderful presentation. I'm going to try to stop smiling. All right. At this time, we are going to jump into the business portion of our meeting. Hard act to follow, but we do have some things to, to get done this evening. So at this time, we will take approval of the previous meeting minutes for our special meeting from November 24th, 2020, and our regular meeting from November 30th, 2020 will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion from Dr. Akbar, a second from Mrs. McKidrick. Any comments, question, or discussion on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And superintendent's recommendations personnel?
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories five through 16.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mrs. McKittrick, a second from Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the personnel recommendations?
I had a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
It was just on item 13.2, mail truck driver. I think it said new position. I was just curious as to what it before this, or was it just someone who didn't have that official name?
I'll let Mrs. Folk address that because that was a result of our last negotiation sessions with Local 100.
Good evening. In your response to your question, Mrs. Autry, this was a operator one position that is part of the Buildings and Grounds Department, who are the people that oversee the actual outside care of the properties, the trees, the cutting of lawns, the bushes, et cetera. And we felt that we needed two of those positions back into the crew to help service those areas in a proper maintenance form and created these part-time positions to only deliver the internal mail. And this was something negotiated so we could get our civil service positions back into a full operational mode and also be able to handle vacations and absences and still maintain the properties in the way in which we want to maintain them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question. Thank you, Ms. Autry. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry? Ms. Autry? Can you hear us, Ms. Autry? I'm going to call the next one who could drop into the chat. Mr. Bravo?
Yes. Ms. Autry doesn't appear to be frozen, but there may be an audio problem, so let's check to make sure she can hear us.
She looks like she can't hear. Okay, let's have her. Let's have her log out and log back in, and we'll hold the roll until that time.
Great. She did record her vote as yes, and she is going to jump off and jump back on.
Okay.
Thank you all for being patient. Just a reminder for the public that's joining us this evening. As we're conducting our meetings virtually, our requirements under Ohio Attorney General guidance is that any time a voting member needs to exit the meeting due to technical problems, that we hold the meeting until they are able to rejoin. So we're going to give her just a moment to do that. Ms. Autry, it looks like you're back. Can you hear us okay now?
I can't hear anything.
We can hear you. I just heard that.
Ms. Autry, are you able to hear us now? No.
Uh-oh. You know, there's no handbook for all of this, so we're making it up as we go. Ms. Aut, let me, we ought to see if she can call in.
I'm going to pull that call information.
Welcome to Google Meet. Enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key.
I can mute if I need to.
Thank you. Use your phone to listen and speak to the meeting.
Great. Ms. Autry, can you hear us now? Ms. Autry, can you hear us yet?
I don't see another number coming in.
I don't either, but we know she just joined.
It might have been for the executive session.
I was just thinking the same thing. We might want to check with her.
I'm going to copy that call-in number. Okay, let me copy this.
She said she can hear.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Great. We do have a open item on the table. Ms. Autry, you recorded your vote as yes in the chat. Can you confirm that, please?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Motion passes. Mr. Superintendent, consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. McKittrick and Mrs. Mansfield. Any comments, questions, or discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Okay, Business Affairs?
All right, and finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the Business Affairs recommendations presented in category 23, and would like to point out items numbers 23.20 and 23.21, which are the Goodyear Tire Rubber Company's agreements or memorandums of cooperative agreement as a main partner at the Elick Community Learning Center and our National Veterans Hall of Fame STEM High School. There was a virtual announcement made last week regarding that.
Yes, thank you. Do we have a motion on the Business Affairs Agenda Items?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mansfield and Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion on Business Affairs Items?
Mr. Bravo, I have one question. It was, yeah, I can't remember what number it was. Hold on, 23. It was about the music therapy. And just wondering how we're going to use that. I think it's a really exciting endeavor. I believe it's 23.2? Mr. Superintendent, do you want me to?
Yes, please. Thank you.
This, we have on staff a music therapist. Her name is Edie Hardenstein. She's an amazing music therapist. And so this agreement is actually with St. Mary of the Woods College that has a music therapy program so that she can have a student-teacher work underneath her. And we use music therapy for our students with most intensive needs at Bridges Learning Center. And so the student-teacher will be working with her there. Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion on the Business Affairs Agenda Items? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, a couple of items. Number one, I'm sure, you know, as we're all aware of our current status on the Ohio Department of Health's, you know, risk category for COVID. And looking at our remote plus, we're, you know, looking at trying to implement that during next semester, after the first of the year. I'm sorry and apologize for some of the confusion that's been out there regarding like whether it's court or our STEM robotics program. I think those have been straightened out. You know, when we went to the stay-at-home advisory issued by Summit County, which has actually been extended through the end of January, we had our, the remaining games rescheduled because many of our competitors were also doing the same thing. We've kept practices going because we are doing COVID testing with our athletes, so keeping them in their bubbles during this time. So those have been rescheduled. And also, in, there is a report on our website which tells the number of active cases and the total number of cases that we've had in the school district. Many of them, staff is much higher or higher than students. I think both numbers are under 100 for total. But we're still monitoring that situation. On Friday, I had a meeting with, a virtual meeting with the National Superintendent's Association and the CDC, you know, regarding what they're seeing across the country. And again, we stay in contact with Summit County Public Health regarding the current stats that they are tracking. And also tracking those positive cases, doing contact tracing. I'd like to thank several folks for really being diligent and working with Summit County Public Health to follow up on those cases. Because in some instances, we've had students show up sick with a fever, and we had to send, you know, a student home for an athletic practice. And also having some issues with, you know, a family member in that household as well. So just following up and making sure that we're tracking that. It was a good thing that, you know, we had our medical provider who also, you know, when they're doing the test, are also screening those student athletes. And so that's how we found that out, which is a great, I think, backstop as we continue pushing, you know, pushing through the, you know, this pandemic. And of course, today, there's been a lot of talk about the vaccine. We don't know when it'll actually hit our teachers, you know, and workers in the education sector, but eventually I think it'll, it'll get to that point. I know there were some questions about grades, and I think that'll come up under our report in the instructional policy and student achievement report a little bit later on in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any comments, questions, or discussion there? Okay, hearing none. Just a few items for me. And Deessens mentioned this earlier, but just a reminder that the holiday get-together with our student representatives to the board are virtual, is virtual this year, unfortunately, but it is this week. It's on the 16th. And Mrs. Whitfield sent out a little bit of homework for us. There is an email from her. If you haven't had a chance to see it yet, just want to make sure that that reminder's out there. So also thank you to Deessens for bringing that up. Now is the time of the year when we start to think about committee and cluster assignments for next year. So I'm planting that seed with each of you and letting you know that we'll be sending out, I'll be sending out a blank template so that you can start to let Dr. Akbar and I know your preferences for next year. That's for committee and cluster assignments, and there are a few extra things on there. And I know I've heard from a few of you already, but just wanted to plant that seed. If you haven't had a chance, also, Mr. Steve Horton from Ohio School Boards Association sent out not only the updated district profile template, but also the updated timeline. So you have that in your email. So if you get a chance, please take a look. He is waiting or looking, I should say, for comments back from board members. So if you have a chance to look at that and you do have comments on things that you would like to see added or changed or taken away, please let him know and get those comments back for him. I followed up with Mr. Pendleton last week, and he is still working with Mr. Horton on putting together salary and contract information for our superintendent search. So he believes that they may be able to wrap that up by this week and get that out to us ahead of any next meeting that we would have with Mr. Horton so that we can also discuss salary and contract information and salary range for the position. In discussions with Dr. Akbar, we talked about putting together an end of the year meeting, retreat-style working session meeting for our board. The three agenda items would be just an end-of-the-year wrap-up, finalizing any work on our Advanced APS III and III document that we worked on during the retreat in August. And the third item would be talking about board leadership, committee and cluster assignments, that sort of thing. So transitioning into 2021. So we are going to send out, I will work with Mr. Pendleton, and we're going to send out four possible dates. The 21st, 28th, 29th, and 30th. So that's next Monday, and then the Monday after, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We'll get that out to you. We talked about that again today in a follow-up to our meeting this morning. So we'll get that information out to you and find out what day works best for you. We know that we're coming up against the holidays, so we appreciate the commitment. If you can make the time so that we can talk about these couple of important things. The Advanced APS, by the way, is what would also, when we talked with Mr. Horton, the idea would be that that would be included in the district profile. So we do need to wrap that up so that we can get that in as part of the district profile for the superintendent search. That is it for my report. Any comments, questions, or discussion for me? Okay. Pendleton, Treasures report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did talk to Mr. Horton, the consultant, today, and we worked on the superintendent's salary survey. I don't know that it's his intention to have it done by the end of this week. I don't know that it's his intention to have it done by the end of this week. However, I will forward the board information as it relates to the superintendent's contract, the information that we're going to be collecting, meaning the columns and data that you're going to be collecting, and, uh, some other senior staff salaries and contracts, so that you start to frame that in. His idea was to have that in place in January, although I'm going to be on a call tomorrow with the Ohio Eight. I was going to advance some of that survey data, uh, for SBA. So, uh, Mr. President, you and I can talk tomorrow and, uh, make sure that we're, uh, filling up the plate, so to speak, over the holidays before we get into January and the official announcement.
Good, thank you.
On, on my update, I have an advocacy update, as you might imagine, on House Bill 305, the Fair School Funding Plan, and Senate Bill 376. So three points regarding that. One is, uh, the historic day that happened a few weeks ago. Second is energy created around this, uh, passage of House Bill 305. And then three, what's next, since we didn't get it passed this General Assembly? A few weeks ago, the House Finance Committee voted unanimously to move it out of committee onto the House floor. As you're well aware, from all three ed associations, there was a historic day with a overwhelming vote of 87 to 9 to pass the first constitutional fair school funding plan in the General Assembly in well over 20 years. You also, uh, I'm sure have been peppered, yeah, attention and, uh, editorials all around the state of Ohio, calling for the Senate to move this forward. We've had, uh, the privilege of working with the Senate, obviously from the bill sponsors, Peggy Laner, uh, Senator Laner, and Senator Sykes, and we very much appreciate their guidance and leadership and their action to get it into committee, and I would say deep into committee. Unfortunately, it did not come out of Senate Finance Committee. And so I've got a lot of phone calls, both from the media, from board members, and, uh, advocacy folks, uh, along, like, what happens next? Right? We have all this energy and some of it's turning negative, some of it's turning, uh, a little bit hostile towards moving this, getting it out of Senate, and how do we harness that and, and push it into next year? So we, we did come to close with 133rd General Assembly, now moving on to the 134th General Assembly, starting in January. And we are harnessing that energy in a positive way. There's al- already action about the House making it one of the first, uh, actions of a new House is passing the Fair School Funding Plan. There's also talks about embedding it in the state budget. And we have been pledged from the Senate Finance Committee, and they're welcoming us back in January to start that education back up. Thankfully, the Senate Finance Committee is mostly intact, very few new members. So we do have a pathway forward. We don't want anybody to give up hope. Uh, there was far too much positive momentum and energy created from this historic vote. Uh, we just have a different vehicle now with the state budget. The goal of the budget process is that this doesn't get lost with the dozens, if not hundreds, of other competing interests during a biennium budget process. And that's what the House and Senate are talking about and the bill sponsors are talking about now. How do we continue that momentum so that it doesn't get bogged down in the biennium process? Um, so stay tuned for that. We're going to be talking about that in more detail come Wednesday night in Finance Committee. And you certainly haven't heard the last of it from me either. I'm not going to give up that easy. Thank you.
Thank you, and we know you won't. We appreciate your, uh, efforts and your hard work. Any comments, questions, or discussion for Mr. Pendleton?
Mr. President, I just have one comment in general, and that is to say that, um, yeah, the, the hopeless romantic in me, um, will, will, will continue pining away for the, uh, pa- for the passage of the Fair School Funding Act, and, and I believe it will happen. So that's, that is, that, that is all, sir. That is all.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe there's no denying the momentum that's been built this year and certainly due in no small part to the efforts of our own district and Mr. Pendleton and the work of others. And so I, 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 I'm with you, Dr. Hall. I, I think it's coming. Uh, we just have to, unfortunately, at this time, be patient. Uh, I am a little disappointed, though. I'll spare everyone the editorial comments on a few of the things that maybe the Senate decided to take up instead of fair school funding, um, but we'll leave that there. Um, committee reports, finance capital, uh, finance and capital management.
We don't have a report in this time. We're meeting Wednesday.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Legal contracts and board policy. And as we open this up, I just want to take a moment, um, to thank Dr. Akbar and Mr. Alexander for the outstanding work and the commitment and the hours and hours that I know went into, uh, finalizing a couple of the policies that are before us this evening. Uh, we appreciate this and we know it puts us as, uh, if not the first, one of the first, certainly in the state and maybe across the country as a school board, uh, to do some of the things that we're doing. Um, so we appreciate you and we appreciate your work. Your efforts are outstanding. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Legal Contract and Policy Committee met on December 7th. Uh, we had a lot of discussion. We had various, actually two topics. We basically spent more time on, specifically the racial equity policy. Uh, there were areas that, uh, we wanted the student services to look at, uh, so we can kind of reframe and, uh, get more input from them. We've been framing some of the areas that we were, we were looking at. Some of the areas or a couple of the areas where, where we talk about, uh, with the MOUs and, uh, uh, AEA, which, uh, some of the language we have to work with them on to, to change when it comes to discipline because it's, it's been so much, uh, that it, we'd have to make sure we, we, we correlate with them. Uh, we also have to look at the disciplinary policies that we already have, 5500, 5600, and 5610, uh, which is dealing with discipline. Uh, we also, uh, talked about, um, the recruitment aspect. Um, there were some areas that was removed and there were some languages that Dr. Akbar had, uh, uh, reworded and, uh, put the, incorporated the proper context that we wanted to have in, in the policy. Uh, that was a, a, a good piece that he's done. And, and, and just before, as I move on, uh, Dr. Akbar has put a lot of time in this. I want to take the time to publicly thank him because he has put a lot of time in his policy. We both started out, but he has put a lot of input and spent some long nights too, working on it. So I want to put that out there. Uh, we also went on to talk about the, uh, finance, uh, and the, and the re- uh, resources of allocations with the Finance Committee. We know that Mr. Pendleton has already been looking at that. He started looking at that maybe a little over a year ago. Uh, so we know that he's working on this. We didn't have a lot of comments on that. Um, um, the Dan Ramler and his staff to look at some, some of the, look at the policy and give more of the input as well. And they are going to get with, uh, Dr. James to make sure they can give more input so we can be clear on some, some sections on discipline. Uh, so it was a lot of, about, excuse me, a lot of discussion on the, uh, racial equity policy. We also, uh, discussed policy 7250, uh, which was a commemorations of school facilities. And Mr. James presented it for the second reading. Uh, he shared with the Committee Administrative Guidelines that the, that were drafted and that will support the policy. Uh, there was some discussion on additional language for the guidelines, uh, which Dr. James is going to, uh, get that taken care of forth. And know that some of that included, uh, the background investiga- investigation of individuals being recommended for naming, uh, a minimum per- a minimum period of time before naming rights would be reconsidered. And, uh, community comment period, where the community would have a, a, a period of time to comment on the individuals who might be, um, might be, be recommended to have a name for a building, uh, stadium, uh, library, whatever it may be. Um, and then we went on to, uh, talk about bylaws, uh, 0155 committees. And that was discussed, and, uh, Mr. Bravo had some, uh, some, uh, information that he talked to us about, which we're going to look at our legal counsel to make sure that we, we're not violating any laws and make sure we follow all the proper protocol that's needed, uh, for, for committees. Um, and I also wanted to state that the, the individuals who there were, uh, there at the meeting and, uh, was Dr. Akbar, was, uh, Dr. James, uh, Mr. Bravo, uh, Valerie McKittick, and Dr. Hall. And I want to thank, uh, uh, all of them for their input. Dr. Hall had some good questions and made us think about a couple of things that we need to think about. And Ms. McKittick, she had some information and some areas also that she made us think about and, and question, which is, which is always good for building a, a great policy. So I wanted to thank them for being there. And we were, are going, uh, to, we were going to have, uh, of the, uh, racial equity policy, but we're going to wait for that until after executive session. But we will, uh, look to, for a third reading of the new policy, 7250, commemoration of school facilities. This is the third reading and final reading for that. We will press, we will request for approval of that, um, right now, and then we will wait on the, uh, equity policy to after executive session. And we also want to vote, I'm sorry, on the bylaws of 0155 committees. So we'll be voting, uh, we'll be voting for tonight on new policy 7250, commemoration of, uh, school facilities right now, as well as the bylaws 0155 committees. Thank you.
Just to clear the, um, the bylaws for committee is just up for first reading.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Go back to committee, yeah.
Yeah, so first reading on the bylaws. That will then, uh, go back to committee. So, but we do have a third and final reading on policy, new policy 7250 for the commemoration of school facilities. We'll entertain a motion at this time to approve that policy.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion from Mrs. Mansfield, a second from Ms. Autry. Uh, any comments, questions, or discussion on this policy?
Uh, Mr. President, I have, uh, a few comments on the, uh, commemoration policy. So I was asked a question regarding whether it, you know, that naming would have any impact on, uh, any buildings that are currently under construction. Um, currently, no. Um, if there was to be any type of change on the name, we would need to know that by August 1st of 21, in terms of, um, you know, any interior changes such as colors, mascots or whatever. That's a little earlier, probably by April, in order to get, you know, uh, some limited areas taken care of. In terms of any colors in the balance of any particular building, um, that's probably too late because many of those things have already been put into play, other than, you know, like a gym area, locker rooms, etc.
Thank you for that. Uh, and a, a couple of you have, uh, email updates, uh, on some of that. So, uh, if you get a chance and can take a look at those, that'd be great. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the commemoration policy. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Instructional policy and student achievement?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we, uh, had a meeting last week and, um, we discussed several things that I would advise that you please take a look and make sure you look at the, the documents that were attached. A lot of really good information about IPS and, um, college and career academies. And we also discussed grades and some of the importance of the January, um, back to school and what that might look like. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. McWilliams Woods to talk about, uh, grades that we know about for, um, so far this semester.
Thank you, Mrs. Mansfield. Uh, we do have our marking period one grades that closed at the end of October that we reviewed at instructional policy. Um, and those are our marking period or quarter-type grades. Our second marking period doesn't end until January 15th. So that will be the close of the actual semester, and we'll be able to provide data at the subsequent board meeting, um, regarding that. And that's, you know, those are the most important grades that close out the semester, especially for our high school students, because that's where the credit gets awarded, most importantly, at that semester. So tonight, I'll share what I shared with instructional policy, um, regarding marking period one. And then we do have, uh, uh, interim grades that also came in, although the most important thing, you know, is really the marking period one grade. So we'll focus our energy around that. Um, I'm having Mrs. Gijic cast her screen, so that we can look. We're going to be looking specifically at a Tableau report, um, for a couple of these, and then I'm going to shift to a summary report that shows you all of the data, uh, broken down. And I emailed this to all the board members earlier today, and then I just sent it to you again, in case you want to dive into it once we get to it because the, the spreadsheet is always a little harder to see on the screen. But what you're looking at is the Tableau report that we use, um, that we can drill down to all of the different demographics. Um, we can do grade by grade band, by program area, even some of the programs like Project Grad, we can look specifically and drill down to see what the grade distribution is for programs like that. Um, we can do it by ethnicity, gender, et cetera. Um, the other amazing thing about Tableau is, and we can't show you because it has individual kid names, but if we scrolled down a little further, we would see every single student in our 21,000, uh, district. And we could see right below this line right here, where Mrs. Gijic is stopping, um, are all of the students. So whenever we select, uh, a course that we want to look at, or an ethnicity that we want to take a look at, or we can look at all the students in a certain grade in a certain school who have F grades, it will show us all of their unique data down below so that we can quickly look at which students need, uh, intervention and support. So at the high level, when we look at the grade distribution, what we're looking at is a comparison. The first two columns are language arts, uh, or English. So language arts, the first two columns, we're comparing 2019, 20 marking period one with where we are this year in, after marking period one. And if you look at the top, the A ranges, the dark green, were from 26.5 last year at the end of marking period one, and this year we're at 26.9. And you can see that that obviously is pretty consistent with the number of students who've earned, uh, As in the district. And then same thing, the next two columns are math. When you look at the A range, it goes 24.6 in 1920, and we're at 25.1, um, at the end of this marking period. And as you just kind of glance across, the science and social studies, um, it's a little bit unique because elementary, we didn't have separate grades for science and social studies because we incorporated those concepts into language arts and math. So we're comparing a little bit of apples and oranges there in science and social studies. So we won't spend as much time, uh, tonight on those. And the far right column is career education. That C-A-R-E is just short for career ed. And you can see the As dropped from 43.9% in marking period one in 2019, 20 to 39.8% uh, this year. So, you know, the overarching story is As, and as you drill down to the different demographics, it's some pretty consistent, you know, a few ups and downs, depending on when we flip over to the summary, you'll be able to see that. But for the overarching district, we're pretty consistent in that A range. Obviously, then, when we flip down to where, uh, where the academic folks, obviously, in the House are most concerned. Obviously, then, when we flip down to where, where the academic folks, obviously, in the House are most concerned is the percentage of students earning Fs. And, and again, this lens is we're looking at all students across the district. So when you look at the language arts on the far left, we were at ten point five percent in two thousand nineteen after marking period one, and we've gone up to seventeen point two percent. In math, we went from twelve point four, a bigger jump, all the way to now twenty percent of our students have earned Fs at that same marking period one. And then if we go over to the right, one of the big concerns that I have in career education is a pretty dramatic jump in the number of Fs in our career education courses from thirteen point three percent to twenty-two point three. And that's our middle school and high school courses. We don't have career education courses at elementary, but those are our secondary courses. I'm going to have Mrs. Gijic go ahead and look at grade twelve only. So we're going to drill down and just look at our twelfth graders, because at our instructional policy committee, you know, I talked about this group as being the group. I'm worried about all of our students, obviously, and you've heard that passion from me over this past few months. But the seniors are the students I'm most concerned about because this is, you know, kind of that there isn't another year to catch up. And this is where, if we're not keeping pace, and if we're not passing our courses, that means we're not graduating from high school, most likely. And so this is the group that we are paying a lot of attention to. We're putting some supports in place. But this is the group that we all need to be wrapping our arms around to try to figure out in this remote environment and with remote plus, as soon as it's safe to start to bring students in, how we can get the supports needed. So when you look at the twelfth graders, you know, pretty consistent with the higher grades, although there's some dips in language arts, but pretty consistent there in math. But when you look down at the Fs, we went from fourteen point six percent to nineteen point three in language arts. In math, again, a bigger drop off where it's eleven point nine percent to twenty-one point eight percent Fs in math. And then again, the big concern, because the career education classes, many of those classes are requirements for the graduation pathways, since the state has opened up, you know, multiple different pathways. Obviously, with college and career academies, a lot of our students are using their career education experiences and courses and their hours in the lab and the industry credentials. That's the pathway for them towards graduation. And we went from ten percent last fall marking period one to twenty-two point one percent failures in the career education courses. And that, this is just for seniors. So, you know, those are live bodies. Those are kids that, that we have to collectively get across the finish line at the end of the year. And that's why this remote plus, as soon as it's safe to do so, when we come back after break, we've got to be able to prioritize the seniors to get them into those career ed labs, doing their hours that they need for their courses, passing the industry credentials that they use for graduation, as well as their core academic classes where, in language arts and math, where they're starting to fall behind, obviously. I'm going to have Mrs. Gijic hop over to the summary document. So what I did was just took the Tableau data and summarized it for you so that you could easily see it on one document to show other demographics. And I have little, the top chart is the summary of the As. So the A grades, just like we looked at in the Tableau report. You'll notice the, the asterisks that I put underneath three of the columns are where I, I just tagged those as where we're seeing a more concerning drop. So the white point difference is a nine-point drop in our CTE, our career education courses in our receiving or earning As. And then our English language learners, our ESL students, obviously a huge concern because of the drops in As, and you'll see that there's a much larger percentage in the F category for our English learners. And that's going to be a primary focus for us as well. And then our twelfth grade, just like I said, we're not just seeing that increase in the Fs, but also a drop, a four point seven drop in As for CTE and language arts. And so you can take a look at this and dive in more deeply in the spreadsheet that I sent you so that you can see across all the different demographics. And then when you scroll down to the Fs, same thing, I summarized by, you know, the key demographic areas. And I put little asterisks next to the ones that I was most concerned about. And the English learners, the ESL, is a huge concern because the positive numbers there mean there's more Fs from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. In our CTE courses, for example, it went from ten point seven percent to thirty-one point two percent receiving Fs, and that's twenty point five difference. So that obviously is a huge concern, as well as the English language arts and math. And then the twelfth grade, we already talked about. In the column next to the twelfth grade, in the red column, I put the actual number of additional students that equates to. So for example, in math, that means there were a hundred and fourteen additional students that are not on track to earn credit in that math class because of that failure. So I was trying to give you live bodies, you know, instead of general percentages. This is a hundred and fourteen students additional compared to years past that were, that are now failing, that we have to figure out a way that, as soon as we're safe to come in for remote plus, that we can provide that service. And then if you scroll to the right, Mrs. Gijic, there's one more group. We, we also are seeing, you know, double-digit increases in the percentage of students receiving the Fs in middle school as well. So the distribution was eleven point three percent in nineteen twenty received Fs, for example, in their career ed classes, or in math, it's thirteen point eight percent, and it went up to twenty-six point five percent. So middle school, in terms of those failing grades, same thing. That's, the remote plus was designed to provide that support that when we come back and safely, we're going to have to quickly intervene. We won't have time to be able to do that before the semester grades. But we, you know, obviously, we're not just letting kids, you know, not get intervention support in the remote environment, but the face-to-face, we'll be able to give a whole nother layer of support for the students. So let me just pause there, and I'll show you kindergarten. But before we do that, let me pause just to see if there's any questions just about the data that I've shared so far.
We do. We have questions from Dr. Hall, then Dr. Akbar, and then Mrs. Mansfield. So Dr. Hall, please go ahead.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. President. Appreciate it. So I have, so I'm going to keep my two questions for our two-question rule as we rotate through. But so my first question is, you know, are, are we suggesting then that, I mean, because oftentimes, problems are multifactorial in nature. Since, are there other factors that we think are contributing to the increase in Fs? Or is this something that we're going to, going to pin entirely on remote education is my first question? And then, and then as a related question, I'd be interested if you can comment on how attendance has gone up and down as it relates to failure, right? So, so, you know, if our attendance looks good, you know, and we're still having this, you know, this high rate of Fs, then I'd like to hear your thoughts on why that's occurring. Or, or alternatively, if you're saying that, hey, you know, this, this, you know, the increase in Fs correlates, you know, with an R-square value of almost one, you know, so, you know, almost a perfect correlation, you know, coefficient correlation between the folks who are failing and not attending the online classes. So, so again, those are my first two questions, you know.
Sure. Mrs. Gijic, why don't we go back to the Tableau report and go ahead and take the twelfth grade filter off, and we'll just look at all students again? Because we can take a look at the relationship between attendance and grades. And it, it is a powerful relationship, which is the whole reason why we have the relationship with the Get to School campaign with the Brown's Foundation, because the attendance is so high. What this, the data that we're seeing is, you know, from nineteen twenty, that's pretty consistent over the years. We've gotten a little better over the years, reducing the number of Fs through all the, the work that Mariott Lee Kelly and Mark Black have done with getting kind of lifetime intervention built in. So we, we were seeing sort of a nice steady decrease over the years. But, and then all of a sudden, this remote education, we're seeing this significant increase. The biggest thing that we're hearing from our faculty and our principals is students are connecting. Students are present. We're not seeing what many of our urban brothers and sisters are seeing, where they're saying that some classes, they might only see sixty percent of their kids or seventy percent of their kids. We're seeing our students, but the rate of turning in assignments and keeping up with those assignments and getting them in, even though we have a flexible timeframe, we don't have, we're not the rigid, we didn't just take brick and mortar instruction and turn it into remote. We have a more flexible process where students can turn in grades and get credit after the assignments are even due. But even because of, even with that flexibility, we still are seeing issues with work completion and getting that final piece in. And if you imagine in a face-to-face environment, you know, there's multiple adults that are working with kids to try to make sure that those assignments get turned in, and you're sitting there and you can say, hey, I'm going to just have you sit right here until you get that assignment done. Or you're going to go to this intervention class, and you're going to sit in that class until you get that assignment done. There's all those advantages of being lifetime, where you can grab kids and get them someplace where they get the assignments done if they're not able to, to get that in on their own. So some of that doesn't translate as beautifully in a remote environment as face-to-face. If you scroll down, and this is connected, your attendance question is kind of connected to your first question, obviously. On the left-hand side of the screen, this is the relationship between grades and average attendance. So we're looking at all of our students, and the first bar is for the students who receive As. It shows on the right-hand side of that bar what the average attendance is. So for twenty twenty-one, students who have, who've earned As have an average attendance of ninety-seven point three five percent. Okay? And it actually has gone up from years past, the average attendance. So the attendance is actually a little bit stronger this year with students who have an A. But if you go down to the bottom of that list, students who've earned Fs, their attendance averages seventy-nine percent this year. And that is true. You can see how it really hasn't changed too much from nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. That relationship between attendance and grades is enormous. And that's why attendance is so critical for us as a district, that we, when kids are in school, when we have them in front of us remotely or in front of us, you know, sitting in brick and mortar days, the students perform so much better, and that's what we always strive for. So it can't just be attendance, Dr. Hall, you know, is the, the summary of that is it can't just be attendance. It's more about the work completion and that getting that work in is, is what we're primarily focusing on right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that answer. I'll ask my follow-up on through the next round through. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar, and then Ms. Mansfield. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes. So my question is specific to a conversation we had, I don't know, a few meetings ago, specific to the twelfth graders and those who are approaching graduation. And with this data, and we're thinking about, you know, APS remote plus, you know, can you talk us through, you know, how graduation is shaping up with this twelfth grade class right now? And if there's any, you know, we know that there's, there are students who don't graduate every year. So I'm not asking you, you know, to say that, you know, there will be some students who won't graduate. I think we all know that. But in comparison to our normal trends, how is, how are we looking?
I'll let Mr. Black jump in because he, every single day of his life, is monitoring those graduates with the graduation team, looking at this year's graduates. Anytime, our biggest problem with our graduation right now, and I think I, I said this in our last meeting, and I mentioned this instructional policy, that as a district, we are very good, because of college and career academies, we are very good at getting students through their pathway requirements. So that could be earning SEALS now this year, or earning industry credentials, or taking, getting the hours needed for some internship hours and things like that. We are really good at that. And we're good at getting students sort of, for the students who are going through their, the test results and using those as their pathway for graduation, we're good at getting them across that finish line for the students who are working towards that. Where, where our continued work is, is earning credits. Prior to remote education, that was the challenge for us in terms of graduation. As we've gone up until that, you know, eighty percent graduation rate, the students who tend to not graduate are ones that have lost credit through that ninth through twelfth grade. So that's why when I see the students who are losing credit then potentially, now, this is marking period one, so they have through January fifteenth to get the work in and to demonstrate their mastery of the content to earn that semester credit. But when I see those increased Fs, that tells me we're on this path, at least right now, where we're going to have even more students not earning credits that will hurt their graduation. Mr. Black, do you want to add where our students currently are in terms of graduation? What you're seeing, the patterns?
Yeah, Dr. Akbar, because, you know, Ellen gave you a little explanation. Can you ask your question again, please? Thanks.
Yes, I'm looking to see what are our trends currently looking like for twelfth grade graduation? So as Dr. McWilliams Woods said, you live in this data more frequently. Are we seeing greater levels of first-term twelfth grade credit earns or grades, when you think about failures? More than normal is what I was asking.
Yeah, and we're, we're seeing about the same with the credits. Yeah, and we're seeing about the same with the credits. We've, we've had our graduation committee meeting the last two weeks. And, you know, before the grading period ends, we tried to catch the students who may be carrying an F right now to try to get them to improve, we call it real time intervention. So right now, we're seeing, you know, probably the same percentage of of students, you know, from the past year, and if you compare it to this year, it's about the same. What we're seeing a decrease in, actually, is normally at this time, we would have about 650 students off track to graduate from hitting the normal graduation path based on credits, test pass, credentials earned. And we're down this year to about 375. So normally around this time, we have about 650 students that are off track, meaning they're missing either their, you know, their credits, they gotta do credit recovery, or they don't have their test score, or they haven't passed the credential, or met the alternative pathway. So we we are happy about that because we have students earning credentials. And, you know, we're doing the retakes right now for the OST, so we have some students that are looking to hit, you know, their graduation pathway. Because, you know, it's, it's more than just the credits, as you guys know, but right now, the credit, similar to last year, but the pathways, a lot better than last year. So we're about half of what we were last year, so.
And what, Mr., what Mr., clarify that is all of the, that is, all those other things that you talked about are all the things that we are masterful at getting students through, because of college and career academies, I mean, we're sort of equipped students through all of those pathways. Now, if we can't get students in to finish industry credentials the rest of this year in their lab time, that could disrupt students who are getting the industry credentials. We've tried to move as many as we can to industry credentials that are remote. But some of them, if you're in the welding program, or if you're in the masonry program, or you're in an auto tech program, you can't get those industry credentials without that lab time that would happen typically in the second semester, which is where you would go very heavy in prepping for the industry credential exam and taking the exam. And those have not, those are industry credentials, so those are not like State Department of Ed credentials. So those are not areas that the state doesn't control, like flipping those over to a remote environment during this time. Those are, those are governed by the industry. And right now, they're not flipping those industry credentials over to a remote administration and a remote environment. So it's the lab time, the second semester, that we would be heavily focused on wanting to get students in. And then the credits, we've done a lot of work to get the students where they need to be with credits. But looking at this data, if the students don't recover from these increased Fs by the second semester, now we've kind of blown up this increased path that we were on into today, where we're not gonna stay on that positive path. So Dr. Akbar decided.
See, if I can ask another question, Mr., I believe you said, but I could be wrong, trying to, considering what Mr. Black stated and what you stated, we're not seeing major decreases in in filling grades for seniors, but maybe the concern is the juniors and sophomores and those coming behind, is that what we're saying?
Let me, can you, Karen, can you pull up the seniors again? After marking period one, we are seeing a dramatic increase in the number of Fs. Okay, marking period one doesn't dictate your closure of your semester, though. Okay, so that they have until the end of the semester to demonstrate their mastery. But this should be a, an alarm for us to say, look, after marking period one grades, we're seeing in math, for example, we're seeing instead of only 11%, typically 12% is where we normally would be in a normal year, we have 21 or 22% of our students failing in math right now, these are seniors. Okay, so it's nearly doubled the percentage of students failing in math. So that is a significant concern. Do we have them in credit recovery and do we have them, you know, working in lifetime intervention? Yes, prior to this marking period, the students were were more on track. As Mr. Black said, they've been more on track up until this point. This is a red flag that we have right now that says, we've got to keep giving support to the students. And that's why we were so adamant about Remote Plus, because this is pretty similar to what we were seeing in the interim grades that we saw that I shared with you at a previous board meeting to say, we've got to make sure that we can bring students in, sit in these CTE classes where they're having a lot more failures, be able to get some intervention and support, face to face, lifetime. And that's why the superintendent wants to continue that recommendation for Remote Plus as long as we can bring the students in safely after break or as soon as we can. Does that make sense? So I, I don't want you to think, we're not saying that we're not seeing more Fs, we are. We're seeing a dramatic increase in the number of Fs. But the the true test will be from now until the end of the semester and our ability to wrap support around in Remote Plus.
Yes, I appreciate that clarity, actually, that provides much, you know, de-cloudiness to the the two statements, because at first it seemed like they were just positioned, but I think with your explanation, it shows where the disconnect is. So just for everyone else, if I'm gathering what you're saying correctly is, as far as credits earned, we have more students on track for graduating as far as credits earned up into this year.
That's correct.
And when you look at the trend of where this year is going, we have more Fs, especially in in math, which is double 5% in science is what I'm seeing. That's going to, that gives an indication that there might be some people who fall off track. Is that, am I understanding now the connection?
Yes, that was a perfect summary.
Dr. McWilliams Woods, I could just add to that clarification there. We also gotta remember, there's only two areas that are the danger zones, and that is language, arts and math. Now, we don't want any student to get an F, but what I mean by that is that takes four credits in in English and math to graduate. So if you fall off at any semester point, you're off track to graduate. Science and social studies, the majority of our students have earned the graduation requirement. And they may just take an extra science and social studies, you know, just to keep their skills sharpened. But there's only three credits needed in science and social studies. By junior year, you hope for all of your students to have that. In the senior year, most of them are taking it as an additional elective to try to satisfy their elective, so I want to be clear there. So that's why math and English is really the areas that we really focus on for the real time intervention, because if a student slips up in their senior year, they can go all four years with being on track. And then second semester or first semester of their senior year, if they fail, they're now off track to graduate. So that's why that is such an important, those are the two important focus areas for us right now.
And that's why in the summary, we really focused in on the English and math subject areas so that you can see across all the different demographic areas.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield, Mrs. Mansfield, and then Mr. Alexander.
Patrick, do you want to let Bruce jump ahead, because he said his was related in this area? You want to, want to stay on this topic?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. Yeah, I, I, I just listened to what what you were saying, Dr. Williams Woods, and I, I was just wondering, do we think that, that the, since the kids are the Fs and they've, they've started out looking at that first grading period that they didn't do well at all, could that be due to a transition period from being in in class, having that face to face, and then going to remote where they don't have that face to face? And maybe there's a transition period? And then also, are we seeing that those, those, those students, that they're, some of them are making progress more, well, they're doing better than they did the first grading period? And then will they probably do better? Or is there any signs that they may do better at the end of this grading period? Because it seems like to me, I, I, I'm looking at a transition period from real, being in classroom to, to getting to, getting adjusted to this year, to maybe picking it up and then moving forward and, and getting possibly back on track.
Mrs. Jijic, why don't you click on marking period two interims? And we'll just show that, so, Mr. Alexander, the, you know, between, from the marking period two, which was the end of October, and just December 2nd, right around that time, we closed the interims. So between end of October till January 15th, halfway through, which was just a week and a half ago, we ended up closing our interims so that we could communicate that as well to our families. And this is where we are, so from your argument to say, or the question, which is a very valid question, you know, assuming the marking period one is gonna have to be sort of this transition time for students, and we would expect them to be going through, just learning all the rituals and routines of remote education and the relationships and all of that, and figuring out their home environment to have a good, positive environment for learning. Now, we're around December 2nd, we have marking period two interims. And the, these are the results of marking period two that we actually are seeing even more Fs during this marking period two. Now, historically, interims are always a little bit higher because, you know, this is, they, they may not have gotten all the assignments in. And this is sort of the, the way, these aren't official kind of grades, this is how we communicate to students and families. And sometimes there's some tough love going on during this interim where we're communicating to families, saying, hey, they really haven't been getting their work in, or they're not studying enough for the tests. And this is the way we communicate and kind of raise a red flag. So these are usually higher than what the, the final marking period grade turns out. But we're not seeing a, a drop off or even a level. So this worries me, I'm not gonna get too worried until we see the end of the first semester grades to see if everybody kind of comes together. But, but I just wanted to share with you that we're not seeing a decrease at this point in time as of December 2nd in the number of Fs.
As we continue, can we just add back the 1920 for comparison on these second marking period interims?
We actually don't have on this report, do you want to see, we don't have 2019, 20 marking period two on here?
That's marking period one versus interim marking period two.
Yeah, right now, we're looking at the marking period one grades and then the 2021 marking period two interims, yeah.
Okay, got it, thank you. Mr. Alexander, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mansfield.
So I may have a question in here, but some of this is just observation. You know, what I see, and I'm sure what other board members see here, is exactly what we're hearing, right? Anecdotally, and that is, for students that this is working for, it's really, really working. And for the ones that it's not, it's really, really not. So it's, it just kind of shows what exactly we've been hearing from families and from students as we've gone through this. And that's, that's the tough part about virtual, right? It's, it's just like, not, you know, that's why we have all kinds of different pathways for things. The other thing is how life altering, and I just want to keep saying that, I think I started saying that back in October, that we're in a position with these students where this is a life altering, gonna be a life altering moment for them educationally. It could be for their jobs. I'm, I'm messaging with someone right now who's telling me about a student who's just giving up and trying to encourage them, don't give up, we will get them there, let's, you know, find a way. And it's not just the seniors, I know we're really focusing on them, that's a huge, a lot of people stop, a lot of people quit, and we don't want that to happen. But I also have in my mind, and I know that Dr. McWilliams Woods does, and I know that Val, Mrs. McCetrick and I have talked about this in instructional policy as well. Also, the special education students are in that position where it can be life altering, especially those that are gonna turn 22, because they're gonna turn 22, whether we have had these experiences with them this year or not. And also our emerging readers, and how absolutely crucial this window of opportunity is in their education. So trying to get them into Remote Plus and whatever other things that we can do are really crucial. And then Dr. Hall made a really interesting point, and just, I, I want to piggyback off that, he said, you know, how much of this is online learning, and I'm sorry, Dr. Hall, that I'm kind of summarizing you, but you said something to the effect of, how much do, do we know that this is related to them being in online learning? And what that kind of brings into my head is, this is not at all to blame how hard our staff is working on this or the incredible lessons that they've put together. There are a lot of other things going on right now, too, right? The reason we're in online learning is because we're in the middle of a global pandemic. They may have parents who've lost jobs, they may be suffering from booted security. So all of those things that are that are affecting their lives could be interfering with their learning as well as the fact that virtual learning is tough for them, right? It's not just those other factors. And just, that brought me to the final, finally, a question that is, what interventions of any kind or services are we gonna do over break, or who can we refer people to after Friday and until January 4th for some of those needs? Because those needs aren't gonna go away just because we're not in virtual learning. And we, all this does, too, is show what a place school is beyond just a place for learning, it is all those things, right? It's, it's so many people's shelter in the storm. So I'll, I'll be quiet now and see if you have any input on those things.
Yeah, I think, you know, when, when, to cycle back to Dr. Hall's question, it really, you know, remote education is, is the service we're providing. But when you look at, and, and this board has talked a lot about the social emotional needs of the students, the family dynamics, you know, all of the, the housing issues, the work issues, all of the wraparound support that, that we try to help and support through our after hour support center and through our connectors, it is all of that. And, and we, even though we're seeing these Fs, and these are live bodies, so for me, you know, that's where the, the drive is that every single live body, we have to make sure we're supporting them, because we don't want them to experience failure during this time. And especially for these seniors, we don't want the life altering consequences of this year that's already difficult for that to, to continue and impact their livelihood and their lives as they transition into adulthood. So that's why this laser focus. What our teachers are doing every day is incredible. And I, I get, I just spent the last four days last week with educators, urban educators across the world, actually, not just in the United States. And I heard numbers like 50% of our students are failing, or 45% of our students are failing. So that's where you get even more appreciative of our education team here in Akron and what we were able to pull off, fortunately, because of all the leadership of Dr. James and the board on being sort of ready for this moment. So you can't take that away from what we're doing and what we're accomplishing. But I still say, we have kids in need, and Remote Plus is designed for that. We've got to make sure that we can, as soon as it's safe. We've got to make sure that we can, as soon as it's safe and as soon as the superintendent can flip that switch, which I know he's he's, you know, embedded with the Summit County Public Health and the governor's office, as soon as it happens, uh, we're going to have to swarm and provide that support. And I think that will help the social emotional support because our counselors will be engaged. Just getting students in, doing hands-on projects is going to brighten their soul and give them the motivation to to complete this work. So that it's all that.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask a question as I ask if anybody else uh that hasn't spoken uh would like to uh jump in and then we'll go back around. Um, I had mentioned before, at least from my perspective, it feels like, you know, one of the things this pandemic has done has forced us to look at competing interests and equity from a social public health standpoint um versus where it puts us from an educational standpoint. And certainly, one can appreciate the decisions that we made based on public health, saying, you know, none of the educational pieces matter if we start losing students or their families due to COVID. Um, but I'd be curious to know, and and you started to touch on it just a tad uh in terms of comparable data from other urban areas uh around the state um and suburban areas, both within our county and maybe around the state. Are you guys sharing this type of information to see where our students fall uh versus maybe where their counterparts, especially those who uh maybe have continued to go to school, are falling? And then the second part of that is, is there light at the end of the tunnel? We're just finishing or coming to the close of second semester. Is there hope beyond second semester or second grading period to turn things around, uh to improve uh our performance and and to wrap our arms around these students and and get them across the finish line, as you've mentioned?
Yeah, I think uh I just had a phone call last Friday, a week ago Friday. Um, we, the chief academic officers in the Ohio eight large districts meet every month. And um a good part of our discussion was this data that everyone is seeing. Um, and this is national data as well, but uh but in Ohio, everyone was kind of diving in, looking at sharing strategies, how are you getting connected? They're very impressed with our connectivity kind of data that we have and what how the structure we've built. So I was sharing a part of that information with other districts. Some of our other counterparts are shifting some of their grading practices um and trying to to be more flexible. They they were sort of, some districts kind of took brick and mortar and just sort of plopped it into remote. We didn't do that. Um, you know, we really designed a remote education um and already built in some flexibility because we've had years' experience running uh remote education. So some districts are trying to figure out how to not just be this brick and mortar in a remote environment and give students flexibility for some asynchronous time and a broader scale of getting assignments in and looking back to do work and things like that that we already built in. Um, so we've been helping with that. Some districts are changing temporarily their grading scales, um especially with how Fs are being treated. Um, so there's things that we can talk about. Um, I obviously, our first attempt and our first uh focus is to wrap support around students. Um, and that that's where we want to first land. But we will continue discussion going into second semester to see if we want to make any uh procedural and policy kind of changes for second semester.
And hope for the second semester?
Um, hope for the second semester, if if the numbers are health data numbers, our COVID data can settle in after second semester so we can actually bring students back, that's going to be the most important thing because our teachers have done a beautiful job identifying the students who need support using reports like this. This is what the teachers use to drill down to see which students need support. Um, the the key will be for us to be able to provide the number of adults needed to provide that support in that remote plus environment, hopefully starting second semester, which starts January 19th.
Good, thank you. I didn't see anyone else respond. Is there anyone else? Yes, Ms. McCetrick. Mrs. McCetrick.
Very quick comment, please. Our goal is to get the kids back in school, right? That's what everybody on this call wants. So I'm going to put out there something that we've asked many times, and that is as we have winter break and we have holidays, for everyone to please, please be careful. Um, we've gone over 300,000 deaths now in the United States from COVID. So please remember to keep your gatherings small, to wear a mask whenever you're outside your home, and to be very careful around people who aren't who don't live with you in your home. And that will be the best way that we can keep our numbers or try to get our numbers down and get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Well said, Mrs. McCetrick. Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't gone before we circle back around? Okay, thank you, Dr. Hall.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Appreciate it. Uh, I saw I have a couple more follow-up questions. Um.
Mr. Black, I just saw uh it show up that Dr. James left the meeting. I don't know if that.
Well, that wasn't very.
Well, he got kicked off or something.
Mr. Pendleton's playing with the buttons over there. We'll give it just a second and see if he uh. There he is.
I promise I didn't.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Hall?
Sure, thanks. Um, so I I guess a couple of questions, maybe a comment or two here. Um, is, you know, and I don't want to put words in the camera. Um, you know, but it it sounds like what we're saying is that what we're that basically, it feels like we're saying that we're powerless to turn this around until and unless we can get back to in-school learning. Um, you know, that's that's what I feel like I'm hearing, you know, as far as what's being implied by the comments. Um, and and I guess, you know, my my thought about this is that, you know, in-person learning um has its difficulties, right? And so we evolve and we figure out how to um, you know, creative, you know, come up with creative interventions to address the, you know, the difficulties that we see with in-person learning. Um, remote learning, you know, again, is going to present, it's a a unique set of challenges. And I guess what I'm concerned about is, you know, it sounds like we're saying, oh, well, there's not a whole lot we can do until we get back to in-person learning in January or February. But, you know, and then, you know, couple that with what I think I heard um, you know, what I think I heard someone say, which was that we weren't overly, that we weren't overly concerned yet about grades because we were going to wait to see what happened in marking period two. And the reason why I I put those two comments together because if what we're suggesting is that, you know, and this is why this is a question, right? I'm looking for a comment or answer back on this. But if we're suggesting that there's not a whole lot that we're going to do until until the kids are back in school, then what do we think is going to actually change with, you know, in marking period two if they're not back in school? So at this point, we are concerned now, right? Because now we've got two marking periods. So that's kind of the first question slash comment that I I I'd like to get a response to. Um, and then the second one would be, um, you know, I I'd really love to talk more about. Um, so actually, my question was from Mr. Black. Um, we talked about, you know, graduation rates. Now, I know that we report on the report card, we look at we look at four-year graduation rates. We also look at students that take that that graduate in five years, right? So I'm interested to hear about the students that this is their fifth year. Um, you know, how are those students progressing in in this? You know, would love to hear an update around that. Are they being adversely impacted? So so those are my two sort of buckets of of questions. Again, uh, those are not meant to put words in people's mouths. I'm just, that's what I'm hearing. And so so I need so I need someone to sort of calibrate for me, um, you know, around that. So thank you.
I think that I'll tackle the first question, then I'll, Mr. Black, talk about the uh fifth-year seniors. Um, i- if that's the impression that I've given tonight, then that's a rather egregious impression. If that's what you took away that we're not doing extraordinary measures right now to intervene and that we're just kind of hanging out, waiting for kids to fail, there is no way that an Akron Public School teacher or principal or central office administrator uh would ever let that happen. I mean, our teachers are going to extraordinary measures every single day, intervening, calling, texting, dropping off at people's homes, knocking on doors, trying to find students to keep them motivated and engaged. Um, and that's, there's no way that we're waiting until the end of the semester and just watching grades to figure that out. Um, and we will, if we stay remote and don't go into remote plus or have students back, we will be looking at additional ways. If there's other creative, social, emotional ways that we can make sure that we've got students connected um and getting their assignments in and ways that we're doing more project-based learning and all of those things that we talk about every single day. Um, and so we're not waiting, we're we're intervening as we speak. Um, and we'll continue to do so every single day that we come to work. Mr. Black?
Now, before Mr. Black uh speaks, you know, I I remember uh last week, I believe uh Mrs. Jijic uh provided a report about our math teachers and and people who were coming into our, you know, the after-hours call-in center to help folks, you know, our students with math, which I think is at the top of the list, you know, in terms of that assistance. So we have staff, you know, who are charged with, you know, providing that assistance. Now, this past week, I met with our student board members, you know, and asked the question around what you're getting at, Dr. Hall. And, you know, it it for some of them, uh, they felt, you know, that maybe some of the, there's a lot of asynchronous work that they have to do on top of everything else. I think there was something that, you know, they felt there is a lot of pressure uh on them through, well, I think, but they missed, you know, that in-person thing. And remember, we've, you know, we've had a variety of conversations about, you know, how to get to some form of, you know, in-person, you know, all the way back in, you know, we talked about, you know, the blended model and then trying to get to our remote plus. I think we're, you know, a lot of this information, you know, just in terms of health, you know, changes in terms of where we are, you know, with our community spread. But I think the other thing is making sure that we have the staff who are available to help our kids because we have to have a certain number of staff in person to do some of those, you know, hands-on activities that our students need and to also do some of the hands-on academic assistance, uh, particularly with our students.
So, Mr. Black, if you can handle um how our fifth-year graduates are faring under remote education?
Now, you guys can have all that dialogue that you just had and may not be able to comment on the four-year as well. So let me add something there because we got a lot of people that are really working hard for our fourth-year students cohort cohort R 2021. We have retired folks, we have um, you know, subs who have come to the um schools to help our students um in a in an after-hours way, but also in a mentoring way. Um, we have subs that are at every building that's part of our IAT team that is really looking at the students who are struggling and working with them on a more individual level. So I I definitely don't want folks to think that, you know, we're waiting till the second semester to get results uh because we put a lot of systems in place uh for our students to, you know, uh make sure that they're getting back on track. Because we understand first and foremost that our students are going through a social, emotional learning uh curve, which is a new curriculum for some of them. Being educated from their home in itself creates a barrier because that's not a learning environment that they were used to. So we understand that, and we got to make sure that we support that. We also understand that we have students who are losing their homes and losing their apartments and being evicted and and may find themselves in Canton one day and back in Akron the next, and that may impact their grades. So we're looking at all of that to make sure that we are approaching this in an equitable way and understanding that each case is 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 individual and uh case by case, but also that the supports may may need to be more. Um, you know, because of where we're at with the pandemic and where we're at with uh everyone just learning how to operate within it. Um, as far as our fifth year, as you guys know, we have our Akron Alternative School that focuses on our fifth-year students, and that's that that's their focus. Uh, so they have their, we have some of the students who are on track to graduate in January. There will be a January graduation for some of our students who are in our fifth-year cohort. They were part of the class of uh 2020, and they're ready to graduate in January. And then we'll have another group graduate, uh, you know, in June area. So uh they're working just like our traditional schools are, but they're just focusing on our fifth-year students, making sure they're getting them in school. Uh, part of the problem with our fifth-year students, something that we didn't really have to face, you know, in the past as much, and that is they are now look to uh help the families, you know, with the bills. So our flexibility at the AAA Academy is, you know, we try to give our students an option of morning and afternoon, as well as some of them are working on their work at 2:00 in the morning because they got they got to carry a full-time job. And they need one class that they failed maybe last year or two classes. So, you know, we're we're working with them and monitoring them and supporting them. So yes, uh, fifth-year students get the same uh level of support and focus as our four-year cohort. But thanks for the question. Appreciate that.
So let me follow up. So I I I don't think I have to get an answer to the question I asked, Mr. Black. So I was asking you, um, what did the trend look like for fifth-year students? So so is are are is are they well as 20 as last year? Or are are we seeing a decline in the fifth-year population uh of of potential graduates? I I don't know that I heard that answer come through.
Yeah, and and I'm sorry if you didn't hear that. Um, what what I was saying was for our fifth year, there is case by case. It's you can't really compare. It's like, you know, apples to oranges because last year, maybe that cohort, you know, didn't pass the test of the OST. Um, and they didn't use the flexibility. Well, you know, this cohort this year, they had a waiver for the OST. So most of our students in our fifth year this year needs one or two courses to pass in order to graduate. So and they're trending to pass that. Um, there's really, there's really, and when I say trending to pass that, from the time that they uh didn't graduate in the summer to now, they have accumulated accumulated the credits needed to graduate. So some, most of them will be graduating in January. And then there's some that needs more credits um than others. Uh, but uh last year's class, 2019, it was mostly about tests. It was about credentials. This class is mostly about credit. So uh it's it's not really a a trend comparison. But, you know, we're we're seeing the same amount of students. We got about, you know, 100 students, 125 students this year. We had 125 students last year as it relate, well, 135 students last year as it relates to numbers. But they need different things for graduation. It's not the same need as our four-year cohort. They all need credits, you know, because they haven't finished. Well, we may have a student in the fifth-year class that have all their credits. They just needed to pass a credential. They got that credential passed, now they're eligible to graduate. So it's a little different.
Yeah, no, yeah, so I follow that. So let me ask the question, let me ask it a different way. Um, so so do we do we keep, so we keep a a graduation rate for the fifth-year students, correct? So there were 135 last year, what percent graduated? And I'm asking, you know, what what do we think the percentage looks like this year as compared to last year? And I and I apologize if I didn't ask that question more clearly at the outset.
Yeah, um, you know, with it with it being, um, you know, we had more success in the four-year uh graduation rate for this cohort that we're currently with. Um, so the fifth year uh will will look will look a little different because there's there's less students that really need to graduate based on, you know, the um, the denominator. Um, so we may have had more students last year because, you know, the way the graduation rate is calculated, it's based off of, you know, from your freshman year moving forward. So that that's going to really, that's really going to depend on, you know, the number of students that we found and located, you know, that may not have graduated with us within four years or within five years. And once we get those numbers, because it's not, it's every student that's in that fifth-year graduation cohort, they may be in another school, they may be at a charter school, and then that credit will come back to us. So it's it's kind of hard to say if the graduation rate is going to be the same. So it's, it's kind of hard to say if the graduation rate is gonna be the same because it depends on how many students. Well, with the pandemic, we're probably gonna have a lot more students that were, you know, mobile and, and moved out of the, the district or, you know, moved to a charter. But once Howard and his team gets those numbers back and we, and we calculate them, it's not just the students that sit with us, it's the students that may have left, but they, they're at a charter school and they're gonna finish in five years, or they went to another high school and they're gonna finish in five years. So it's, it's, it's tough to say what the, what the graduation rate may be for that fifth-year class.
Okay, Roger that. Appreciate it. Yeah.
We can, we can send you the trend data for our four-year graduation and our fifth-year graduation, what we know today based on the data. Because it's always a year behind too. So we, we don't know, you know, currently, it's always a year behind is the graduation data, but we'll send that to you.
Great, and I appreciate your passionate response to my, to my, to my questions. Appreciate it.
And Dr. Hall, you were talking about the, you, you wanted the fifth year for the 2020 class, right?
Yeah, so basically, I'm just trying to understand, you know, you know, how this environment is impacting folks who would, who would have been on track to graduate in five years as, as opposed to, you know, so I get, there's a distinction between the four-year and the five-year cohort, but, you know, looking at the number of folks who were, would have been in their fifth year last year versus them are folks who are in their fifth year this year, you know, that's, that's, that comparison is, is what I'm looking for. What is our success rate in the students that we're touching, you know, from one year to the next? Really saying, it really, another way of saying it, is, is the remote learning, you know, causing, you know, more damage to students that would have graduated this year, now they're not because of, you know, and cannot be tied back to this being in a remote learning environment?
And, and I would say no, because, you know, our fifth-year students, they've been doing, that's what they do, they do remote all the time.
Right. They're already, AAA is already primarily remote. It's almost like Remote Plus. They get to do most, almost all their coursework remote, but they get mentoring support and they can come in face-to-face to get support if needed, but it's all individualized. So that, that's probably the closest to what we're wanting to do for all kids. AAA already does that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you both, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Autry.
Yeah, and I'll be, I'll be very quick. My fellow board members offered a lot that I agree with, but, you know, with all this doom and gloom and the numbers, you know, I just wanna remind everybody that the students are also adapting and overcoming and learning new skills, as well as the families and teachers all during this pandemic. And I just wanna remind everybody that pre-COVID, we didn't necessarily have the best scales that we were measuring some of these things on. And, you know, this doesn't necessarily necessitate, um, need a response, but at some point in time, you know, when are we gonna lobby for some type of relief, some type of waiver at the state and federal level? You know, what is the new administration gonna do? Because, you know, we're, we're expecting, you know, all of these results during this pandemic and things weren't necessarily perfect prior to the pandemic. So, you know, we're, we're saying how the students are falling behind. And I just wanna, you know, remind everybody that, yeah, you can look at it from that aspect, but what you can also say is that they're adapting, they're learning new skills during a pandemic in a time that's shaking their world, where they're losing family members, where they're watching all of this, you know, be developed around them. And I just wanted to put that on the table, not necessarily for a response. But I think it would be, it would be a shame if during this pandemic, we don't do our very best to recalibrate these scales where they needed to be even pre-COVID. So that's all I'd like to add.
Well said, Mrs. Autry. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for the presentation tonight. We appreciate the update. Dr. Ellen McWilliams-Woods, Karen, Mark, thank you all for contributing. Mr. Superintendent, anything else for your report?
No.
All right, thank you so much. Or sorry, that was instructional policy student achievement. I'm taking us backwards in the agenda. All right. Anything else for instructional policy student achievement? Mrs. McKittrick, Mrs. Mansfield?
No.
All right, thank you so much. For tonight, we have no unfinished or business or new business to come before the board. We do have reason to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22 G1 and G3 to consider personnel matters and to meet with legal counsel regarding items that are eminently pending court action or consultation. So we'll entertain a motion at this point to recess into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mrs. McKittrick, a second from Mr. Alexander. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
For our board and for the public, if we could completely log out of this session, we're gonna enter into executive session. We may still have action pending before the board when we return, so we'll see you all shortly. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to the regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, December 14th, 2020. We are back in regular session, having just returned from executive session. There is no action to come before this board at this time, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, I think, for Ms. McKittrick, a second for Mr. Alexander, if that's okay. And we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, have a good holiday.
Everybody have a good night.
Good night, guys.
Have a good holiday.
Go Browns!
Go Browns!